And welcome to the October 18th meeting of the Brea Board of Education. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Chapman?
Here.
Mrs. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Docman?
Here.
Mr. Duke?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. It's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes from the September 20th, 21, 2021 Public IDEA Funds Hearing and Regular Meeting as shown in the exhibits.
No move?
Second.
Are there any changes, additions? Okay, roll call.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris? Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number four, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes from the October 4th, 2021 work session as shown in the exhibit.
No move?
Second.
Are there any changes or additions to these? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Abstain.
Okay, Board of Education Committee reports?
Couple, couple of meetings too, this past couple of weeks. Busy. On August 12th, there was an Education Foundation meeting. Were a couple of things discussed. There's, we're in the middle of the Friends of the Foundation campaign. And there's been a mailing that's been gone out to supporters of the foundation. But they'll also be posting for you on the Facebook page. So if you're interested in supporting the good work that the foundation is doing, I recommend either checking their website or their Facebook page. I'm sure that we're gonna see those, those items popping up over the next month or so. There also was some changes in regards to scholarships, raising the minimum scholarship amount to $1,000 from $500,000. Generally agreed upon that $500 just doesn't quite go as far as it used to. Had to really make a impact for our recipients at minimum $1,000 wherever it was possible. And then there was some also, some discussion about the auction for this year. Last year it was online because of COVID. They're hoping, they're kind of, they're still kind of on, on the fence, maybe online, maybe in person, maybe a little bit of both. I know it was mentioned in the meeting that having not been to some of these events in person, that a big part of the fundraising is the social aspect, social aspect. Try to incorporate some sort of in-person event. And then on the 14th of August, I participated in the first meeting of the Jedi Task Force. And we saw many old faces from last year as well as some new faces. And the majority of the meeting was spent reviewing what was done last year. Discussed a little bit about equity versus quality, how that fits within a school district. And then for about the last 45 minutes of the meeting, we broke out into small teams with co-chairs and took a look at the, boy, probably about a dozen, 12 to 15 vision statements that Task Force had come up with last year. And we were tasked with kind of taking a look at any one or more of those vision states, seeing how it applies to our group, whether it was a community, teacher, administrators, students, parents, there were a lot of subgroups with those categories. And afterwards, we kind of shared what, what our, what our group discussed and what we came up with. So it was, it was good first kickoff. Again, I hope that it only continues to grow with more people from our community. We're good. Thank you.
That was October.
That is.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All right, any other committee reports?
Polaris is currently going to all the associate schools, introducing the different programs to mostly sophomores but also other classes. They're also working on the middle school, middle school program. Summer at Polaris, well, the middle school's family at the homeschool and then high school courses, summer at Polaris facility. That's it.
Okay, Board of Education comments?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank the, the three communities was able to attend all of the Fall Fests this past month. And it's, they were amazing. Of course, there was one that really stood out, but I'm not gonna say which one. But they were really great for the community, had a lot of fun, got to meet a lot of people. The great thing about this campaign reelection thing is that you get to meet a lot of great people. You get to see a lot of the area. I've driven down streets I've never driven down before, just because I was forced to, to take people the, the many signs that they've requested or literature. So I'm, I'm sure the other candidates find it the same, same way, that this, this is a great community to live in, raise your families in. So kudos to that. It, it's really overwhelming to see the support and it kind of cancels out the two or three people that, you know, continue to want to insult, get personal online. I guess that goes with the territory. It's unfortunate, but selfishly, it, it helps me get votes when people insult. It just, it just adds to the, the people who say, hey, you know, hang in there, Steve. So thank you. Two things, last Thursday, the State Board of Education came up with the Resolution Number 13. And I just want to hit some of the high points. I think it's very significant. This is a resolution to promote academic excellence in K through 12 education for each Ohio student without prejudice or respect to race, ethnicity, or creed. If you recall, last July 14th, 2020, the State Board adopted a resolution to condemn racism and to advance equity. This came right after the George Floyd incident. Nation was shocked at the horror of that. And then we followed it up, our, our board here with the resolution, as many did across the country. But now, this resolution is calling to repeal that statement of July 14th, 2020. They say, whereas the board has since observed not only a growing national divide, but a troubling focus on the color of one's skin rather than on the content of one's character. This passed, I believe it was a 10 to six vote. There's 19 people on the board. We've talked about that, how eight are appointed. So pretty significant that they have chosen to repeal that statement, that resolution from, from almost 18 months ago. They also talk about here, resolve that the State Board of Education emphatically affirms the primary place of academics in Ohio's K through 12 public schools, and be it further resolved that the State Board of Education repeals the resolution to condemn racism and to advance equity and opportunity for black students, indigenous students, and students of color. I can provide a copy for board members here if they would like one. I'm sure they, they've seen this out there. My proposal is I'd like to place this on the agenda for our next board meeting or for a soon, soon-to-be board meeting, that we follow this up as a board and repeal the resolution that we signed last summer, as, follow the State Board of Education guidelines as we do in most everything that we do here as a local board. And again, follow up what the State Board is doing and, and repeal or rescind that resolution as a local school board and replace it with this one. The other thing is that, one second here, this came up Saturday, that the Pennsylvania School Boards Association, the PSBA, similar to the Ohio School Boards Association, OSBA, have voted to leave the NSBA, which we are a part of, the National School Boards Association. They've voted to leave. Why? Well, they said that the National Association, the NSBA, has called parents domestic terrorists. In a letter to its members, the PSBA said the group vote unanimously to leave the National Association due to a long list of issues with the group, the most recent of which was a controversial letter to President Biden. The letter from the PSBA said the White House letter fomented more disputes and cast partisanship on our work on behalf of school directors when we seek to find common ground and support all school directors in their work, no matter their politics. The PSBA added, it has been a struggle for the board and leadership of the Pennsylvania School Boards Association to identify a reason to continue to be a part of the Federation that is not focused on bipartisanship, civility, and seeking solutions to the internal problems that have plagued the national organization for so long. So I'd like to see our state board, again, do the same thing the Pennsylvania School Board is and, and to leave the NSBA if they're going to continue to label parents in this way and, and just to be this divisive organization that it looks in which they're headed under the, the direction of the, of the White House and our president. So those are all I have today. Thank you.
I had the opportunity to attend the choir concert a couple of weeks ago, and it was their first big one indoors, and, and they were fabulous, as well as the marching band varsity show, which was done outside à la Blossom. And it was just, I, I mean, I've been to those 1,000 times, but it seemed like there were a lot more people, I think, because it was outdoors. And it was just, the weather couldn't have been more perfect. So thank you to Jeff Adali and Sarah Novak in our music department. Okay. Public participation, recognizing any member of the public who wishes to comment regarding non-agenda-related items and agenda items. First, we have Bill Holman.
Good evening, everyone. My first issue is the bullying issue in our school system. My son has dealt with bullying multiple times in our school system since he's been here, ever since kindergarten all the way up to current. The innocent, the innocent in many cases is treated like a criminal when we go to talk to the staff, the principals in many cases. I have talked to certain principals during this recent incident, and my son, once again, they treat him like, like he's the one causing the problem. This needs, this definitely needs to change. I'm, I'm really fed up with this. The other issue is telling a child he has no right to defend himself from a bully that goes against the very morals of what being an American is. This country was founded on defending ourselves. Why are we gonna sit here and let a bully beat up an innocent kid? Think about that. This country was founded on defending ourselves. We fought for our rights. Why are we gonna let our kids get beat up? These policies need to change. If we don't address these issues, innocent kids are gonna continue to get bullied in our schools, and these kids are gonna get hurt and they're gonna be mentally scarred for the rest of their lives. Where's that helping the good kids? It's not at all. My next question goes to the school board. Why are the majority of the school board members so afraid to talk to the parents? Is it the fact that you are, that, that you know that we're very upset and pissed about a lot of the issues that are going on in our school system, and you don't want to, you're, you're afraid to confront us with these, these issues? And you know how embarrassing it will be to be called out on it. This is my second time requesting this. I have brought this up once before at a previous meeting, and I have never heard nothing back from anybody on bringing this up. And I think this would, I think, I'm sure there's a lot of people here that would love to be able to have an opportunity to ask school board members questions on a night such as this. Also, I'd like to know what anti-American propaganda, correct me if I'm wrong if I'm not pronouncing it right, Kai Graves, will be telling teachers this Thursday at Professional Development Day. How about this be put on live public video so everybody here and all the other parents in our community can see what you guys are so much about pushing and what you're so proud of? I think we all love to see what's, what they have to say on that meeting. And my final statement tonight is I moved to Brea over 15 years ago because of the safe community and the school system having an A rating. Since then, this school system has slipped into a D under Chapman and Wheeler's leadership. I think it's time we get some fresh leadership to our schools and get this back to an A rating that it once had. It's time to get this school system back on track. Thank you.
Next is Hudson Holman.
Hello, I am a middle schooler from the Brea Middle Park, Brea Mid Park Middle School. Yes, I have been bullied and called a racist, and people accuse me of saying I hate black people, throwing me into lockers, and even down the stairs, et cetera. These kids are even, are often not dealt with in the right way. They're only dealt with a light talk, and that is definitely not working with these kids. And that's not the only issue. There's also another issue for a fact, the backpack situation. These backpacks are re, way too heavy for these kids. I cleaned out my backpack, and after I cleaned it out, it weighed over 25 pounds. It was all right, and I can't even go to that locker unless morning lunch enrichment. And we only have 15 minutes to eat at lunch. I can't waste any more time to go to my locker, because I can hardly even eat my lunch with the time we already have. I told my grandmother about this backpack situation, and she told me that she saw a little girl half the size of my size walking out of the building with her back arched, struggling to carry the backpack. There's way more issues within the schools right now, and all these issues are not acceptable. Thank you.
Marlene Holman.
Hello. Yes, I am a 70-year-old grandmother of Hudson. And other than Steve up there, you are a very disappointing bunch. You pretend to care about the kids, but you don't. It's only your political agenda, like Jedi and CRT, which has no place in school curriculum. My grandson has been bullied in school, and your policies have failed him. He came out crying almost one day. I wanted, you don't know how I wanted to go back into that school. However, I try to keep myself under control. You are more concerned about taking the freedom away from parents to know what is best for their children. You are pushy, negative, anti-American, and a joke. When I was going to school, your crazy ideas would have been laughed at. Your priorities are so screwed up. You want to tell children what to think instead of how to think. All of you, except Steve, have been programmed to force this garbage on our kids. Your smiles are smokescreens for your devious ideas. Is that why you refuse to answer parents' questions? Stick to reading, writing, math, science. No common core either. I am praying that Steve and Larry get elected, because maybe together they can stop this insanity.
JB Blackwelder. Apologies if I did not pronounce that correctly.
So good evening. My name is JB Blackwelder, and this address is not to be meant as a criticism of Jedi. I just recently joined the task force. During the previous school board meeting, we had two presentations by outside groups, about a survey that was given to eighth to 12th grade students, I believe, and then an equity audit, I believe it was called. And during this, it became pretty apparent we're spending some material district monies and personnel's time related to this, and this is related to Jedi. And one of the themes that kind of emerged from that was a strong willingness to consider outsiders' thoughts on how we might do things differently, try to be better, try to improve, maybe win. Accordingly, I think it would be nice if we took a board member, kind of to create a loud and strong message of win the report card for the Titans, for the parents, grandparents, guardians, tutors, teachers, administrators, school board members, and the community at large. I think the report card's very important for the community. A reason report card, no As, two Bs, two Cs, two Ds. And with this methodology that they're currently using, I think we, you know, we gotta get some As going, get some Cs to Bs and As, get the Ds to Cs and Bs, and hopefully keep moving forward till we get all As or close to it. Like the Jedi efforts, I think it's, it's a tough deal. These report cards, they're a moving target, but I think we just have to work at it and get additional resources, additional energies. I think we should bring in outside the school folks, similar to what we're doing with Jedi. We're bringing in consultants, we're having meetings, and I think we should do the same for that as well. I think we need to have a program link dropdown, just like Jedi, and, you know, have it something called maybe RCE, Report Card Excellence. And we just attach it just like that. Get special meetings going with the consultants, the board members, the community, the parents, the educators, and just basically model it after what we're doing, you know, with the Jedi program. If we have issues with students not showing up, creating a zero, maybe we can develop some additional incentives and support for those students so they can do their part as a Titan, take the test and avoid the zero for the community. And I know for some students, tests like these are very hard. I just think we need to do extra work to generate Titan pride in this. I mean, our report card is important to the community, it's important to the school, it's important. Whether or not we think that the report card measures things correctly, it just ends up being important. So I think that we need to really come together like we've done with Jedi. And I, and I'm not saying this is about every student doing it like everybody else's student. I think we, you know, approach it differently for the students, but just try to get each student to do their own personal best, you know, give them additional monies and resources, time, awareness, passion, school pride, community involvement, and all those things, just like we're doing for Jedi. So I think it would be a wonderful thing to try to develop that and put that together. So thank you very much, and go Titans.
James Gresh.
Good evening. The Joe Biden, the Joe Biden Obama Department of Justice is now going after parents who disagree with the state K-12 public schools. Here to tell you tonight, Joe Biden, Merrick Garland, parents are not gonna be silenced. Parents know what's going on in schools now by what's been revealed. So parents won't be silenced, will only steal our resolve. The Democrat candidate in the Virginia governor's race has stated he's running for Democrat Governor of Virginia. Parents shouldn't have any say in what students are taught. Can you believe that? That's the corrupt Democrat Party these days. Leftist liberal agendas of their party. They're corrupted racist agendas. Parents in this school district need to decide which candidates support this Jedi program that has infiltrated our schools, which is, by the way, reverse racism. That's exactly what the Jedi program is. It's reverse racism. It's an agenda against white people. Reverse racism. So if you support Marxist history books being taught, being used by history teachers in this school district, including my daughter, and history teachers that don't stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have one of those in the junior high, then by all means, vote for Chapman and Zirkey, because that's what they support. They hate, they support this Jedi hate-filled racist agenda. There are two clear candidates running who reject this, these leftist liberals infiltration of our schools, two clear candidates who reject gender, LGBTQ being planted in our kids' heads as early as first grade. These people don't want masculine boys or feminine girls. They want a generation of confused social justice warriors that contribute zero to society like the BLM and Antifa movements. These people look to destroy the America we know and love. In closing, one more comment. Let's go, Brandon. Let's go, Brandon.
Our final speaker is Dave Ceccharelli. Ceccharelli.
I would like to start with an excerpt from criticalrace.org. "In the wake of the unfortunate death of George Floyd on May 25th, 2020, and the subsequent Black Lives Matter protests/riots, multiple universities and school boards have responded to campus activities on outside groups demanding anti-racist actions be taken. College universities and school boards have responded in a couple of different ways. On July 14th, 2020, at the Brea City School Board meeting, less than two months after George Floyd's death, a resolution of commitment to equity and excellence in education was introduced, which is very interesting timing." Let me give you a couple examples of how some colleges, universities, and other school boards have responded according to criticalrace.org. "By implementing anti-racism bias and diversity training, to get students, faculty, and staff to understand their implicit biases, institutions have required them to undergo some form of training ranging from small group orientations to full-blown classes. I believe those classes will start for the faculty this coming week. That's why the kids don't have school on Thursday and Friday. Diversity is a word we all recognize. It's the D in the acronym JDI. Webster's Dictionary defines diversity as inclusion of people of different races, cultures, et cetera, in a group or organization. I'm just gonna jump right to the I in JDI, which is inclusion. Webster's defines inclusion as the act or practice of including and accommodating people who have historically been excluded as because of their race, gender, sexuality, or ability." Other ways schools have responded to groups demanding anti-racist actions, according to criticalrace.org, are changing admission policies. In an effort to ensure greater equality of outcome, several universities and school boards have taken steps to make their admissions process more equitable. These actions can range from scrapping standardized testings to adding a diversity equity scorecard. I just mentioned equity, which is the E in JDI, which is defined in Webster's as justice according to natural law or right, specifically freedom from bias or favoritism. Last is justice, the J in JDI. Justice is defined in Webster's as the administration of law, especially the establishment of determination of rights according to the rules of law or equity. Equity is a word we hear often in this school district, and here are some interesting synonyms of equity: detachment, disinterest, and objectiveness. I'm no wordsmith, but what I'm presenting here to the school board today sounds more like a division of the community and its students more than bringing it together. I seen a social media post the other day, and it said, from one of our school board members, "If anyone tells you they're CRT in the district, please ask them for proof", end quote. I think I may have just did that. Thank you. You're welcome. Let's go, Brandon.
Hey, superintendent's update?
Okay, just, I have two things. One, I want to talk about, actually, just a short reference to the report card that was released on Thursday. One, I want to talk about actually just a short reference to the report card that was released on Thursday. Of which you guys got email in my update on Friday, direct link to that. I want, if you take a look at it, because it's interesting, Mr. Marino and I sat down today, I know I talked with Ms. Sanson about it. We had some conversation of what was released on Thursday is not the same as what you see today. So I was planning on doing a short, I don't even know if I want to say presentation. So remember in, on September 7th that Mr. Marino did do a presentation to the board that included all the data related to the testing. So that is part of what's on the report card, but there were some other things. It actually, from what was released on Thursday to what's on there today, the actual look of it is completely different. So, I guess part of it is I want to hear from you guys. One, if you've had, if you looked at what I sent you on, if you looked at it on Friday night, it looks different today. I'm going, I will tell you that. So, I think what, and what I, what I'd like to do is that the next work session is to get input from, from you. Taking a look at this, for example, if you go to the report card overview and there's a part, there are no letter grades. This, this year, the report card has no letter grades. If you look at the improving at-risk K-3 readers, Mr. Marino and I sat down and looked at this today and we're not even sure what this data actually represents. So, again, information, there's a lot of confusion right now because what is also being talked about and put out there is what the new report card is going to look like. Because the new report card will not have letter grades either. So, there's, there's a lot of confusion between what the new report card is going to look like, the data that it is or isn't actually included on this report card. So, I guess what I'm asking for all of you is to take another look at this, to review each of the different links because, again, this does not look the same as it did on Thursday or Friday morning or Friday afternoon when I sent it to you. Reach out to me and let me know. It's hard to do a deep dive into everything that's on this document, right? Because all the different links, everything that you go to. It's like I talked to Lori today about even like the special ed part of it. You know, so I think what I want from you guys is what, what specifically would you like some further information on besides the data that we gave you, that Adam had given you at that meeting in September? Okay? So take a close look at that. Yeah.
So, the next report card comes out next October?
Ish, yeah.
So, it won't have grades, it'll have stars?
Yes.
Have they explained how that translates?
Yes. I think I, I think I included that. Actually, I'm, I'm going to give that to you at the next, at the work session when we go over the report card. Because I do want to talk untouched base on some of the differences and the changes. So I'll give you one example. If you look at, when you go to the district at a glance and you take, you look down at Prepared for Success. And, and I've heard people speak about Prepared for Success as, as an example. And that prior, that, again, there's no grade this year. In years past, there was a grade on Prepared for Success. That was never intended to be an, a part of the report card that actually had a grade, right? Because it's different, different place, different districts or, I, I give the example, when I was in Brunswick, if you talked about kids who were taking CCP classes, so dual enrollment. Well, there were way more kids in Brunswick taking CCP classes. Why? Because Tri-C was in the parking lot. So, all these different kinds of things, when you take a look at, at all the different parts and pieces of, of this in, the Prepared for Success indicator, which they're going to change the name of that too. Was never really meant to be a letter grade. It's really just meant to be data. So that is a school district, again, we use that data to inform our decisions. So we know that less than 50, about 50% of our kids take a college approach. Which means then we have to come up with some other things then to also address the needs of those kids as far as a career vision of what they think that they're going to do when they're out of school. So it's really meant to be data that helps, helps us with what we're doing with our kids, not a letter grade.
How does, how does Brunswick get community college to come to their parking lot and others can't?
Tri-C is built, there's a, there's a Tri-C building basically in the parking lot of Brunswick High School. Yeah. And like literally, figuratively, right? So our, the kids at Brunswick High School could walk out of Brunswick High School right over to Tri-C, take a CCP class and then walk right back over to Brunswick High School and take a class. So, of course, those numbers are going to look different for dual enrollment when you have kids who are able to do that.
So Valley Forge can do that too.
Yeah. So their, their dual enrollment courses, so that's why a letter grade on this, this isn't meant to be, this is one of the changes that's coming in the new report card. That it's not going to be a letter grade, that it's just going to be, just raw data of, of the numbers and percentages of kids that are doing this, that, or the other.
I mean, the, the parents have to have a way to, to look at other districts as compared to theirs. I, I just think it's, we're, we're making it harder to get information to the parents. How, how does a parent compare their district with their neighboring district? If they want to move, they need to have this information. It seems to me like it's getting harder.
Well, this, this goes back to the creation of the report card in the first place. Report cards were never meant to rank school districts. Report cards when they were first created were really only created to provide data and information. That's it. It turned into now let's take what's on a report card and actually rank schools. It was never intended to be that way. That's why this, that's why there's this overhaul right now. And then there's still discussion with the overhaul that will take place starting next year on the 21, 22 report cards. There's already conversation about some overhaul with that report card. Okay. The second thing I wanted to talk about is in my update to you on Friday. I included two pieces of information about athletics. And so I have Mr. Howard here, Dr. Smithberger, if you guys have questions. One of the things was a recommendation, and I think, you know, they both did a really good job of taking a look. This is, this is a recommendation basically to discontinue our lacrosse program at the high school. I support that recommendation based on the information that they had provided to me and what I have provided to you. So I just wanted to see if there were any questions for either one of them. They are both here. No, no questions? It was presented well, yes.
The second page.
Yep, that's, that's a sec, that's a part two. Yep, that's a part two.
Could we just have Mr. Howard come up and just give a brief statement about it so people that are watching at home know what's going on?
You want, you want the sheet? Okay. I'm going to give you a, I'm going to give you part two also. So far. They need you at the microphone so they can hear you. Yep. So you just want to give the overview of your recommendation and why?
Dr. Smithberger and I took a look at, starting back about a year ago, just taking a look at our lacrosse program and really just looking at, at all of our programs. And recognizing some of the things that were, I guess, deficient in our program and just kind of where we were at. So we did kind of a viability study of the program. Just the findings in the program, just, we had declining numbers. Taking this back to 2015 when I, I was first employed as the athletic director. I was asked to start our lacrosse program. And at the time, we didn't have a specific, a process or procedure for implementation of new interscholastic athletic teams. So it was just more like, hey, let's, let's take a look at starting the program. There was some student interest. There were a couple of parents interested in starting the program. So that was kind of one of my first tasks as the athletic director. Through that, really, we just kind of found our way through the process because there wasn't really a process in place. And over the years, I think we struggled really just to, to provide a program that aligns with our mission. And the main thing focused around this recommendation is that we really want to provide a safe environment. A positive experience for our student athletes. And we feel like at this point in our lacrosse program, we have 13 players right now that are signed up for the program. You have to have field, you have to field 11 players to play a game, so we'd only have a couple of subs at this point. And we don't have a youth program in our community, a strong youth program to support our high school program. So what we get are, are lacrosse players that are not experienced in playing lacrosse. So it puts our players at more of kind of a recreational level and we're trying to play a varsity schedule. So we feel like, through our findings, we felt like, you know, it's, it's probably not putting our, our kids at a safe, safe place right now, so.
Good question. Is there any place they can play at them? Travel, club?
Yeah.
So they can continue their?
There's plenty of opportunities, you know, out there for the players that we do have that are interested in lacrosse to continue to play the sport. Also, there's a, there's a OHSA rule that they can, if we don't offer the sport in our district, that they can play at a high school that offers a sport in a neighboring district. Right now, let's see, Olmsted Falls has lacrosse. North Ridgeville, Westlake.
Do those schools have to be open to letting their kids try out or is that, they have to allow?
That's a, that gets brought to the superintendent's, you know, the athletic director would, would make the superintendent aware that there's a player that's requesting to play in our district. And then that needs a superintendent's approval.
Both superintendents?
The one that they're, the one that they're going to.
The one they're going to. Where would they have to try, is it before they try out or?
Yes.
Before they even try out, they would have to be allowed to, you find that most are amenable to that or?
We haven't had too many situations like that, to be honest.
But most are, Steve. Like when that happens, you don't want to keep a kid just because another district doesn't have that sport out of it. So, most are amenable to that.
Yeah. Yeah, there are private clubs that they can continue to play lacrosse.
So, can we go to part two of that then? So part of that conversation with Adam and Mark was that, again, how lacrosse kind of just landed. It was just kind of a boom, we're going to start lacrosse, right? Without any kind of procedures put in place in order to do that. So one of the things Adam also did then was put together that, that second document that we're going to use as we move forward if we were to start a club program. Or whether we go straight to establishing another varsity program, whatever the case may be. So do you want to talk a little bit about that too?
Sure. You know, what, what I did here is just take a look at, you know, other districts and what they do for implementation of new programs. And tried to really fit what, what fits into our mission in terms of creating a new program. So, I put together these steps of if we ever come down, you know, the path where we want to start a new program or we have student interest, a strong student interest. We have a youth program that supports it, then we have a process in place that we can follow. So, put together these steps for a procedure for implementation. At first, that when we adopt the program, that there's an approval process for club status. That, you know, there, there are plenty of points on here that the, the sport needs to be considered for approval by the OHSA or must be a sport. By the conference, that the conference has adopted. Obviously, they, they would need monetary support to be sustainable, but that support would, would come not from the district but from the boosters for a couple of years. You know, there's, there's plenty of steps on here. Do you want me to go through every step?
No.
Okay. But yeah, we put this together, so we do have a process to follow. There's an evaluation process that the, the program will be evaluated once they, they go club to then get approved for the district to sponsor. And then we adopt as a varsity sport, so. I'd be happy to share that with anyone if they, they have questions about it.
So for this year, there won't be lacrosse or what if a group of kids want to play, you'd send them to those other districts?
Yeah, you know, the plan is that now to educate our players that are interested, it would be my responsibility to educate them on the process moving forward. So, that's the plan. If this does happen, then I'll send out some information to every person that's signed up for lacrosse saying, hey, here are your options.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Adam. Yep, that's it.
Hey, it's recommended that item C-3 to C-17 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless the Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed. Don't move.
Second.
Just two things I want to point, everything's pretty much routine on the consent agenda. We do have Mrs. Galbencia, who is our purchasing coordinator who works with our standard care program. She is officially retiring at the end of this calendar year, so December 31st. She's been with the district for over 25 years. And then Mr. Bob Schuff at the high school, one of our guidance counselors, is going to retire at the end of the school year and he's been with us for over 35 years. So, we will, I told Mrs. Galbencia she's not allowed to leave. I haven't talked to Bob yet since he has officially put in his retirement, but we will miss them both greatly, but we wish them all the best in retirement.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Number 18, it's recommended the following resident educator program mentor teacher be paid as shown below according to the BFT contract.
Don't move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Epstein.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Number 19, it's recommended the Board of Education enter into a contract between the Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio and the Berea City School District. For the 2021, 22 school year for services in the field stated on the contract as shown in the exhibit.
Don't move.
Second.
This is just, this spells out the specifics of a couple of people who we are employing, well, our employees that we employ full-time through the ESC that are with us pretty much on a full-time basis.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Number 20, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the following tuition-free 12th grade student for the 2021, 22 school year.
Don't move.
Second.
This is just agreement for a, a student who's a senior who's moved out of the district to remain with us through graduation.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Number 21, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the lease agreement between Wide Open West Internet Cable and Phone. And the Berea City School District to provide fiber to support network infrastructure for a term of seven years, beginning, beginning July 1st, 2021, as shown in the exhibit.
Second.
So this is just a correction to the two buildings, right? It, it had, it removed Brookview and Brook Park. This was an agreement that we did in June of, June of 2020. It just takes those two schools out of there.
Excuse me, it adds Brook Park Elementary.
Yes, yes.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Number 22, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the sales quote from Sports Field Specialties for the installation of the girls' softball dugouts at the softball field in the city of Berea as shown in the exhibit.
Don't move.
Second. Are these shade structures or are they actual brick?
These dugouts will match what BW has currently on their field.
Oh, okay.
I would say they're shade structure.
Okay, so there's already dugouts on the BW side, okay.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Number 23, it's recommended the Board of Education approve the policies as shown in the exhibits.
Don't move.
Second.
Are there any questions on any of these? We went over them with Mr. Dave's at our last meeting. Roll call, please.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
And number twenty-four, it's just discussion on another policy, which is graduation requirements.
We have to, need a motion? Great, okay, next.
Vicky, I'm going to share this with you if you can. And I'm going to have Mark present. That way the board can ask questions. I'm sorry. Oh, no. Tell me again what it is? Got it. All right. So I, is it okay if I, I asked Dr. Smithberger to come tonight and share a little bit about this process and the rationale of changing credits from, required credits for graduation from 22 to 21? It looks, it's all pretty now, Mark.
That's helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good to be members of the board. Mrs. Wheeler asked me to present the rationale of kind of why we're, why we're requesting to go from 22 to 21. So if you can click right through there, Vicky, would be helpful, go to slide two for me. So this discussion started about a year and a half ago with Mr. Draves and myself. I asked him one day, actually it was after the video commencement of the class of 20. He came out of the high school and we were closing out the old building. I said, is there a reason we're above the state minimum so high? Like what is the rationale for that? And I explained my rationale and kind of started the discussion there, then we picked it up this fall. So really, here's the rationale, so I want to make sure we're kind of all on the same page. The state minimum is 20 and the policy of 22 unnecessarily negatively impacts our most at risk, at-risk students. For most of our students, whether it's 21, 22, or even 23, it really does make a lot of difference. They're, they're going, they're going well past that minimum. That's just the floor for them that they're exceeding that. We have some students who graduate with over 30 credits. That's not even uncommon, every year we have multiple students do that. So this policy really ends up being a trigger for our most at-risk kids to graduate. And obviously graduation is an important part. I dropped these, this is from Social Security Administration. A student who graduates earns this much more over the course of their life than someone who doesn't. So we're talking about on the male side, 410,000, on the female side, 350,000. I did not do any of the research about why those numbers are different. You guys can, can do that if you're interested on that side of why there's gender inequity there. But the point is, a high school diploma is a gateway to a better life. And we're raising the bar above what is, what is necessary to get that high school diploma. If you look at one slide in a second, we'll talk about the first string suburbs. We're requiring more credits, not only one of them. So the schools that are around us, we're requiring more and we also give you some comp districts that maybe we compare ourselves to that aren't first string suburbs as well. This is important for everyone to understand, it does not preclude going beyond that. So as we look at the, those numbers. We'll get the exact numbers, show them here in a moment. In the last five years, 94.5% of our students have graduated with 20, more than 22 credits. They're already going above that. So we're talking about 5% of our graduates, give or take, or it actually hit the exact number of 22. This year's senior class, over 50% are starting the year with 20 credits or more. A student has to take five credits per Ohio revised code and per, per board policy. So those kids will be well above the 22 credits. So once again, this, this policy is really trying to help our most at-risk students make graduation a little more attainable. If you can click the next slide, Vicky. So here's, here's just the comparison, the first string suburban schools, there's some other schools here on there as well. I'm not going to read those off to everyone, but you can see the number of credits they're requiring and where we fall. The other schools, because I know when I talked to our teachers about this, the ones, one thing they said, well, what about other districts? So like Solon's on there, Brunswick, Medina, Rocky River's 21, Olmstead Falls is 21, North Olmstead's 21, Avon, Avon Laker 21, Illyria's 21, Emerson's 21. So the majority of our conferences are 21. Just so you can get some frame of reference, like, well, who else is doing this? Well, the answer would be most of the conference is doing that. I did not research the entire Northwest Ohio area, but I wanted to give us some, just some comparable districts that we, we are near or around us that plays into it. So I think that's a good kind of sampling of who's, who's getting doing what with their graduation requirements. Next slide, Ms. Turner. So I just wanted to do a credit breakdown so the board could see where we were. So this is by year over the last five years. I thought that was a pretty good sample size, look over a five-year span of time. If the number had been 20, 11 more kids would have graduated. If the number would have been 21, four more kids would have graduated. So you might be thinking, well, that doesn't impact many students. And I think there's two ways to think of it, you can say, well, there's the raw number for sure. But here's the, and Dr. Rubens saw a really interesting line, she's like, it's a hope thing. When a kid's at 14 or 15, 22 feels really far and it becomes an issue. I would say it's analogous to the idea, no one quits a marathon at mile 25. They quit well before that. And the next couple of slides will illustrate how we're getting them across that finish line and what that really looks like. So here are the number of graduates over the last five years. I'll come here as I can see this a little bit because I had to memorize these numbers. Sorry about that, board. So you have the years, the total credits of 22, those are the graduates each year that had exactly 22 credits. The all grads is all the way on the other side. So for example, 2017, we had 23 graduates with 22 credits, we graduated 469 students. As the number decreases over here on the right side, we have fewer students in the district. In case you're wondering like, hey, is your graduation rate going crazy? It's not really, it's actually very stable. It has to do with, we have fewer kids in every class. So if you look at there, the traditional courses only, those are students who graduated with 22 credits, who took all their courses in a traditional fashion, meaning they show up at the school, nine through 12, take courses in a classroom with our teachers. The mix or of traditional and non-traditional courses, that means the students getting their credits from credit recovery. A third-party school like Ohio Online, which goes to the ESC, Ombudsman, through some other means. So if you scroll here at the bottom, 69.67% of those students are not actually getting their credits through a traditional means. Which means they're recovering credit somewhere else. So we're doing something to help them get to the finish line. That's how that, that's actually happening. So this is important, I think, for two reasons to understand this. One, even though we're getting them to 22, this cohort of students, it is a struggle. It is not traditional. They're not coming to school in the traditional sense every day. Oftentimes, this is a, we're, we're putting them in an environment that they can be successful. It looks different than a traditional brick and mortar school, which we know doesn't work for every student. So that's what we're looking at here. So for this group of students, this 122, this 22 is they're scratching, they're clawing. And I didn't pull the exact numbers because I was a little concerned about, we might identify students inadvertently here. This includes summer graduates as well. They're scratching and clawing to the finish line. So that's the credit breakdown of, of who it's actually, what we're trying to do and how we're trying to give them an easier or better opportunity to graduate. And it does not impact, as Mr. Draves pointed out, they still need four maths, four Englishes. It would be somewhere along the end of the line, it's an elective that they're looking at not having to take, which they're not even taking in our schools anyhow. They're taking a third-party location as we go through the process. So you're, might be thinking, well, why, well, what's so difficult about taking an elective? Why, we should like to take an elective. The issue we're, we're looking at with those students isn't they don't want to take an elective necessarily, it's they need to focus on getting their four math credits and four English credits. That becomes the deal breaker, is getting those four maths and four Englishes. And so we want to spend our energies on that and allow them to make the finish line a little quicker. Next slide, Ms. Turner. So here are the students we're talking about as of like today if we were doing this. So we have 23 students in the class of 22 that have between 14 and 15 and a half credits. This number is not arbitrary in the way it was picked. If you have 16 credits, you take six classes, which is a, a very full load for a high school student. Most high school students don't take seven, because that means you're taking a class every single period. They would have to take more than six classes to graduate. We expect all those students to graduate this year, which means we're going to get, get creative with how to get that done. Whether it's like last spring, we did weekend school. We do summer school, we do credit recovery. Sometimes we, we actually farm them out and they're taking a course at a third-party school. But those are the students we're talking about. We're talking about students that 22 is a struggle, a real struggle to get to. Final slide, Ms. Turner. So this is just a pathway, this is literally a copy and paste from our, our planning guide of what a student does every year. So they have the four cores each year. You can see ninth grade there, they have physical education, they're going to take an elective somewhere along the line. That can be a world language, that can be a fine arts course. And we're looking at freshmen getting five and a half to six credits their freshman year. Sophomore year, we need to get all those things again, plus they have PE again and health. Somewhere we're putting that computer credit course in there, a financial lit course. And it's really important that all of our students get all those prereqs done the first two years. Because when they go to Player's Career Center, that's where all their electives are then. So when they come back as a junior and senior, all they can take is math, English, science, math, English, social studies. And that, some variation in their senior year, junior year. So we front-load a kid's high school experience. When it goes well, it's awesome. Those are the seniors with 20 or more credits. When it doesn't go so well, it's scramble time. And this will allow us, because right now we're saying the state minimum says it's 20, we're saying go to 22. In a, in a world where I make a lot of not very good analogies, I'm making one more for you. And using the marathon idea. For these students, we're about at risk kids, every credit is work, every credit is hard. Having them go beyond the state minimum is difficult for them. It's like running a marathon and they, marathon's 20 and we said, when you got done, run another 5K for us. That's us pushing that bar out there. It's not required, it will not impact, quite honestly, most of our students at all. They're going to go still do their thing because they're required to and you can see we front-load stuff. They cannot be part-time students. But it's going to make a difference in some of our most at-risk students' lives. And we, I showed you earlier the earning power that does for them. And so that's why I'm very passionate about it, that's why I believe in this, I think it's good for students. I, I, I talked to our staff, I don't think it has any impact on our staff as far as like, hey, teachers are going to like lose their job because this, no one's going to lose their job because of this. Because we're talking about 20, eh, 20, 25 kids a year that are going to be impacted by this. So that's, that's the rationale. I know I shared it with Mrs. Wheeler, I know she's been a part of this project. Mr. Draves has been a part of it, the admin team at the high school's been a part of it, Dr. Rubens Hall's seen it. And, and I think we're doing some amazing things like the Titan Academy for our students, but that is a tough road to hoe, there's every credit they need to get. So that's, that's where we are with it. I'll be happy to answer questions. Dr. Postal, go ahead.
We've gone from 22 to 21 and the state's 20, why are we going to 21 and not 20?
Quite honestly, I, I think it's probably, 21 is a big ask for some people, I think. Truth be told, I'm not, I'm not opposed to 20, but I think there's some other things that trigger would go to 20. As far as what might happen with staffing and some other things that could, could play a factor.
Okay, thanks.
And I didn't run the numbers for that because I, I think it's already some heartburn going from 22 to 21.
So of those 22, I think you said, Dr. Smithberger, that wouldn't have graduated or are struggling?
Yeah.
How many will be okay at 21 credits? All of them, some of them?
It, it's too hard to project that, it's a great question. But we're sitting here in October to say how those students are going to progress. I will tell you, for the students we're talking about, each credit is a big deal. And we're hyper-focused on making sure they have their credits, so I would hope they'd all make it, but I don't know that to be true.
And to get a credit, you must pass the class.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, absolutely, yes.
The credits just aren't handed out.
Yeah, and the classes don't change, whether it's 22, 21, the rigor of the classes don't change, just number required to pass changes.
Right. I was glad you front-loaded. I was, I was going to say, well, aren't we telling the freshmen, don't get behind before you get behind?
Every single day.
I know.
Yes, that's a.
I know.
Yes.
You can talk until you're, right.
Yes, no, that's, and, and on that front, we keep a running spreadsheet, we pull grades every two weeks. We know who's passing, not passing, we have stuff, stuff work on a real time. Because our goal was never to get to where a student, it breaks my heart, I'm not going to say the student's name, obviously. We put a student in Titan Academy who I believe has five or six credits, who's a fourth-year student.
What was that again?
He has five or six total credits, he's a fourth-year student. So trying to move him along, it, it's going to be more than, like, he's not going to graduate in four years, is the sad truth. And there's a lot of factors for that. And anytime a student has that kind of academic track record, there's a lot of environmental factors, a lot of things didn't, didn't go as well as we wanted to, a lot of interventions we've tried unsuccessfully to, to make a difference there. And the Titan Academy is kind of our last best chance for this young man. And I'm rooting for him, he's a great kid. But it's, it's going to be a tall task because he didn't get, didn't stay with the pack early in his career, quite frankly.
I think it's great that you show what the other schools are doing. I never, that was great information to have. I didn't realize it was one of the, well, maybe the, the only one at 22.
Well, there's a couple, there's a couple.
Couple other ones.
And certainly we, we, I mean, I can tell you like, there are schools that require more than 22 here and there, but that's, that's the anomaly, not the norm.
What's one district?
Bay High School, when I was working there, required more. They're on a block schedule, so the kids get opportunity to take more credits. So they're actually can get up to eight credits a year.
What are they at, 23?
I want to say 24, I think. I think Westlake High School's at 23. And I think that's the only one I can think of off the top of my head that's beyond 22. I want to say Midview's at 22. I mean, there are some 22s out there, but it's much above 22, I think you're really up to search to find that.
How does the staff feel about this?
I've not pulled the entire staff. We met last Thursday and I gave them this exact presentation with rationale. I, I don't want to speculate what 130-ish teachers feel about anything unless I take a, a depth poll. I, I, there was not great turnout to the meeting, so I don't know if they felt a sense of this is happening or if it was a, hey, we're good with it. But certainly, I was not sure what to expect, we had to have everyone there, but not everyone showed up to get the, the rationale information.
So I had asked Tracy to separate this one from the rest of them so that we could get more information. So we weren't scheduled to vote on this tonight, but we can if everybody feels ready to.
I definitely feel a lot more. Had the president really fully understood.
I'd, I'd like to know how the staff, they're the ones on the front lines, you know, is there a way to try again to get them?
So when we say how they feel on, on this, we're going to 22 to 21?
Right.
And so how would that, I guess, how would that look in a survey form? Like, do you support it? Yes or no, or what's the rationale behind that?
Well, are we, my, my, my thinking is, is maybe some feel like we are making it easier. We, we are reducing our standards, we are better than, you know. I, I, I'd like to know if there's huge buy-in, if there's huge resistance. Yeah, I just think it's important that the staff be allowed to give input. I'm, I'm not sure how we want to question, you know, phrase the question, but. You're there on the front lines, you talk to the teachers.
Certainly, and I will follow the board's direction, superintendent's direction on if, if we'd like to survey the entire staff. I would be interested, before we survey, to make sure we know what we're doing with the results. Because I, I don't think it's great.
Important to us, or?
You've had discussion with the union?
Yes.
And with the counselors?
Okay, I mean, yeah.
And we're not, there's not going to be any job loss as a result?
Mr. Draves is moving up here, do you want to say something?
I'm not so worried about job loss, I mean, I'm, I'm concerned about the kids.
I think that's more where the staff might be coming from, where the, the elective programs might go if 25 less kids are taking up.
And we, and I think, I think what Dr. Smithberger's presenting, and Stephen, I go back to, I think you, you guys may have this information too. For, like, I just look at the cohort, I think part of the conversation was at first like, we're going to say 21 and that's all kids are going to take, which isn't true. You know, we have, we have large handfuls of kids who already come into the high school with a minimum of two credits, right? They already start their freshman year coming in with a world language credit, coming in with one, maybe two math credits. That's a start. This, this year's class, and again, I don't think there's a counselor, the other thing is we encourage our athletes to take six classes every year, right? So if you're. So if you're, if you're a student athlete, you're already gonna get 24 credits, because we want you to have six classes in case you were to fail one, to maintain your eligibility. This year's class, 277 students started this year, seniors with 20 credits. 277 out of 444. So by taking it down one, will not, this way I look at it as a high school principal. I know Mr., that's why Mr. Draves is up there, because he's itching as a former high school principal. Is that, for the vast majority of kids, number one, they want to be at school, right? So they come to school, a lot of the electives as a whole are courses that kids really, really enjoy, because we've got great electives. And so for the most, and they do, they have to at least even their senior year. So those 277 kids, at a minimum, 277 kids will graduate with 25 credits or more. So I don't think by us, you know, putting in a registration guide that we're going from 22 to 21 will deter kids, kids want to take most of the courses that they're enrolled in.
Right. This is important to the 22 kids who may not graduate.
Yes, very important.
Versus the 55, 100.
Mark, Mark and I had detailed conversations about this because he and I have both had to tell kids that they're not graduating when they didn't hit it. And 23 kids is 5% of this, of this graduating class, it's a lot. And so you might say it's only 20 kids. Well, to those who sit across the table from the family and the kid, say you didn't make it, it's a lot. I'm actually really proud that Mark's thought of this. And we did have detailed conversations with the BFT with regard to it. And then we did offer to be able to talk to anyone who was concerned. We, Bill, Bill was in the meeting, and I will tell you that our motivation is to help the 23 kids across the finish line. That's it. So there's no other red herring, we're not trying to hide anything. That's what we're trying to do, is to make sure those kids can maybe get the life that, that they can, they can flourish with. That's the intent.
Do we wanna vote now? Next.
Vote.
Okay, so we just need a motion.
Move that three C school district to change the credits needed to graduate from 21 to 20, I'm sorry, 22 to 21, I apologize. 22 to 21 credits.
Second.
Well.
I was just asking if it has to be the actual policy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
5460.
5460.
I move that we approve 546 graduation requirements.
Second.
Any other questions?
Thank you for.
Yeah, thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Thanks, Mark.
And just, just before he leaves, this is, I'm assuming from the board, this is with the intention that we can go ahead and start making that change for this, for the class of 2022, right?
Right, don't policies take effect immediately?
Yes, okay.
Treasurer's update.
Well, this week in the treasurer's office and last week, we've been dealing with the auditors. I brought this up a couple times, we are legally required by the state of Ohio to have an annual audit. The state of Ohio Auditor's Office does our regular audit. So we've been, you know, having the auditors come back in this year. It was all remote last year and it was very trying, I'm doing it all remote. We're also working on the audit for the Council of Governments, our Health and Insurance Consortium. That's going on at the state's own separate entity. We are just the fiscal agent for it. And then we're dealing with are the two companies that are doing the financial statements. So it's, it's been a lot, you know, with the auditors here lately. Next board meeting, the work session, I will present the five-year forecast. I'm currently working on completing it at this time.
It's recommended that items D3 to D7 be approved as part of the consent agenda unless a Board of Education member wishes to have an item removed.
No move.
Second.
Thank you to all of our donors.
Yes, thank you to the donors. That is from the Stuff the Bus campaign that happened earlier this summer. Tracy Witten got the check the other day from, from that. That was very, very nice. That'll go towards school supplies. Also on the agenda tonight, there's appropriation amendments. On this time of year, we true up a lot of the activity accounts or the, the regular accounts in the buildings that we have fees towards, we true them up to the actual enrollment. We load the budgets in the spring for, for the start of the school year, but then once we get the actual numbers in the classes, we true up the budgets up and down. Other than that, that's the routine on the agenda.
Any questions for Jill? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
It's recommended the Board of Education enter into executive session for the purpose of consideration of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official.
No move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Postal?
Yes.
Mr. Docman?
Yes.
Mrs. Chapman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferris?
Yes.
Thank you for coming this evening.